Thank you. At this particular time, all requests to speak would you turn them in? And if you have your cellphone, we ask that you put it on silence or turn it off. At this particular time, the meeting of the city council, Shreveport City Council is now called to order. I'm going to ask Councilman Nicholson to give us the prayer, and Councilman Butcher will lead us in the pledge.
God, thank you for this day. Thank you for our city. Thank you for this opportunity to come together once again to do the business of the citizens we represent, help us to take every decision we have to take today with wisdom, prudence, thoughtfully, and in a manner consistent with our obligations as elected officials of the city of Shreveport. Amen.
If you would, please face the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, what do you call the role, please?
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Mm-hmm.
Councilwoman Dickinson.
Present.
Councilwoman Butcher.
Here.
Councilwoman Jackson.
I'm here.
And Councilwoman Rowland.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference Monday, January 24th, 2022?
Second.
And the city council meeting Tuesday, January 25th, 2022? All in favor, let's vote.
Who voted this way? Vote, and Councilman Butcher say.
Have you voted yet?
Just the minutes.
For the minutes.
I did.
You did. So let me see someone up.
Most okay. With six, one up.
Thank you. At this particular time, does any council member have any awards or recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I don't see, or is there anyone here from Delta Lambda Omega Chapter of Appa Kappa Appa Sorority Incorporated?
Okay. Any council member, any others? Madam Perkins, do you have any awards, recognition, or distinguished guest not to exceed 15 minutes?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I have a very special guest today. Please allow me to introduce student mayor Morgan Meyer, sitting to my left. He is a fifth grader at University Elementary School who loves the LSU Tigers and enjoys playing the guitar and golf. He has a passion for robotics and acting and someday hopes to become a famous actor, although he said he would settle for being an engineer.
Wow.
Today, he's serving as mayor and has already met with department heads to get updated on what's going on with city operations, and at this time, he will read the remainder of the mayoral announcements.
Okay.
Mayor Meyer.
Save the date, Tuesday, 2/22/22. We plan to light up the night sky from the Texas Street Bridge with the new Bukowski Bridge of Lights show. A bridge dedication will take place on the riverfront thanks to our generous donors, Dr. George and Sandra Bukowski. We hope to see each of you at this wonderful event. The Department of Property Standards is holding its next sweep from 8:00 a.m. to noon in District G tomorrow. Citizens can bring trash and tires for disposal to Bill Cockerell Park, 4109 Hines Road, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Wednesday. The Shreveport Police Department will be citing property owners for yard parking and other violations.
Thank you, Mayor Meyer, for those comments, and I want to announce two of the policies that Mayor Meyer is trying to put into place today. One of them, we can for sure do. The second one, I'm not so sure. The first policy is that today is everybody's birthday. If you're over 30, you lose a year, and if you're under 30, you get to gain a year and be a year older. So that's his first policy. We're definitely going to implement that today, so make sure you get out your pens. And the second policy, I got to talk to Superintendent Gorey, but he wants homework to be optional today as well, so I need to place a call for that one. But just want to let everybody know what Mayor Morgan Meyer is implementing here in the city of Shreveport today. Thank you so much, Morgan, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. And lastly, I want to just quickly recognize our auxiliary policemen in the audience. Will you all please quickly stand up for us? And thank you for listening. Thank you guys so much. All right, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have any other communications, Mr. Mayor, related to city business?
No other communications.
Thank you. Does any council member have any communications to property standards? Mr. Green?
I was first. Just thank you for earlier today about the mix-up that we had and also the communication that we discussed.
The gentleman on the margin hasn't answered yet.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Green, I know that you all are working regarding tires. We still working and trying to work towards another solution because we have several people that are dumping them on empty lots behind abandoned properties. We still looking into ways to remedy that?
Well, I mean, as far as the tires, we clean them up. Once we cite the property, we're still cleaning them, picking them up, and having to take them to the dump, or to Public Works.
Okay.
So it's a continuous thing until we get something permanent into place, but we do have a meeting, Mr. Martin, set up a meeting, a Zoom meeting with DEQ, so that we can see if we can get a price, a set price, so that Public Works won't have that burden on them, and we can go straight to the tire plant and take them there. So we're just trying to get a dollar figure figured out.
Thank you, sir.
Did everyone receive the revenue collection plan implementation report?
Mr. Chairman, I got an alibi. I apologize. I have Mrs. Jasmine Jernigan in the audience for reappointment to the Historical Preservation Society. If any council members want to ask her any questions.
Mrs. Jernigan, anyone wanted to speak to Mrs. Jernigan?
Hello.
Hi.
Any questions for Mrs. Jernigan? Thank you, Mrs. Jernigan, for another tour of duty.
Just wanted to tell you.
You're very welcome.
Same here. I just wanted to say thank you for committing your time and willingness to serve.
Thank you as well.
Thank you.
It's an honor to serve. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, sorry for disrupting your meeting.
No, go ahead.
I got to take a quick picture with the mayor. I apologize, and then we're out of your way.
Yes, sir. Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is done. Madam Clerk, will there be any legislation added today?
None that I'm aware of, Chairman.
Thank you. Today, we will hear from the public on agenda items only, and you will have three minutes. The vice chair will control the time, and he will call the names.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, apartment M-110, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. Today, I'm speaking on resolution number 814. This is going to be a wonderful idea to see the dog park over at the Southern Hills Park take place, and the reasons are as follows. Number one, there's a dog park that was built over here on this side of Shreveport, somewhere in this town a few years ago, and maybe it's still around as of today. And of course, if it did get flooded out, it was taken care of, and I really like the idea. Number two, well, there was a petition that was signed to get that going a few years ago, but it was really worth it. Three, the people of Southern Hills who have a dog will agree to abide by the rules and the regulations such as people do from the other dog park. Number four, I used to take care of a little bit of a dog years ago, and I knew what it wanted, and of course, it knew what it wanted when it wanted it. And number five, the person with a dog on a leash lets the dog know who's boss and who's not. That's very important. And number six, when Florida told the Doberman not to be no fool and the dog sat down, those were good reasons that this is good enough for a dog park to take place and be built in Southern Hills, and I look forward to getting done real soon. And Dr. Allen, I knew on the agenda exactly what I wanted to talk about.
Thank you, Sammy.
Good evening, Mrs. John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, apartment 121, 71118. Yesterday, I stood before you all seeking information with regards to a resolution that's on for second reading and final passage. I have not heard any information to that, though you all will possibly vote on these today. Resolution number 12. Resolution number 12 deals with our insurance premiums. The fact sheet only signified one area in which funding would be addressed. That funding was in the amount of some $40,000. We have no knowledge of what the remaining $500-plus thousand dollars will be directed towards. Under section D, where second reading and final passage, I too ask for information or clarification on ordinances number five and six, asking whether or not those, excuse me, ordinances were one and the same. Though they said different things on the fact sheet, the information appeared to be the same information. No one has given me any information with regards to those, though you all will decide today whether you will pass them or not. It is important for me, as a constituent in the city of Shreveport, to understand fully how those dollars are being expended, appropriated, or whatever. So if it is within you all's power to provide me with that information, because we've had problems previously about how we manage the dollars, I just am asking for that information. Thank you.
I'm Mr. Hunter. I'm the city risk manager, and I have the information she needs here. The $598,910 is for the workers' compensation premium for all city employees. The $40,000 and $68, $40,000, $68 is for inland marine. Is that what you need?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay. Is that sufficient?
Yep.
Right. You're quite welcome.
Did I help you, Mr. Glover?
I didn't. I wasn't here. I was not.
All right. And Mr. K, oh, Kenny Crepp. Let's see.
Ken Crepp, 157 Archer Avenue, Shreveport, 71105. 12 years ago yesterday was Who Dat Nation, 3117. I'm here to speak in favor of resolution six and ordinance 16. I think ordinance 17 is a companion. Starting with the resolution, I think the pay scale for police, our municipal civil service is quite important, lays out a lot of details. I'm pleased that police is taking the money, not from the operating budget reserve, but from budgeted vacancies. There are so dang many, they'll still be unable to fill everything they have for the foreseeable future. The 13% will help attract and hopefully retain, but it's not the last step. It was a year ago tomorrow that Ms. Taylor, with Chief, then Chief Ben Raymond standing here, "I will do everything I can to help you," unquote. And she has, and y'all have. We got the raise, we're going to pass the pay scale, we got the bonds on December 11, the approval of the voters, we may not have sold them yet. Hopefully, the operating budget reserve being used to fund fire is okay. The sales tax for December sales for January collections, 15,488,000. Whoa. We never hit 14 million before. We blew 15 million away. And the information I have from sales in January, reported in February, we will know them in three weeks, on March 1st. They're way ahead of last year, so after two months. And then, I'm a little concerned about the unfunded vacant positions report. I just can't wrap my arms around 765 vacant positions, most of which are in the general fund. I know there are a lot, but I think it lags a little. Like my story in Focus said Friday, I think some of those positions are filled and just the report may not reflect it. But certainly, on the debit side, in January alone, there was a lot of money not spent because we didn't have people to fill them. Now, unfortunately, the downside is the services are not being provided, whatever type of job it is. Ordinance 16 is important because the street special revenue fund has sufficient funds so that a million dollars can go into the Cow projects fund. Unfortunately, the streets and drainage proposition failed, and so I think it's important to hire engineers to get started on the most critical among those projects. And on a closing note, I just want to wish everybody a great year. We're going to keep marching. Thank you.
I was hoping Mayor Meyer would still be here. He would enjoy this. My name is Cynthia Keith. I live in Broadmore Terrace, but I prefer to say the city is my home. I am the Shreveport Dog Park Alliance Director, and I am here to speak in support of the proposed dog park in Southern Hills. We were the driving force between the dog park on the riverfront. Very valuable, I could run in. It's been so great for this city. Take this off. And we're sure one end of Southern Hills would also be the same way. We are a part of a group called A Better Shreveport that holds a nonprofit. We are an umbrella under them. I belong to four neighborhood associations, sit on the board of one. One of them is Southern Hills Neighborhood. Like I say, my city is my home. I care about this city so much. I do want to brag about the riverfront dog park, the Stoner Park Dog Park. It draws people from all around, draws people from Bojor. Bojor's so jealous of us, I hear it all the time. We are known countrywide about this dog park. They travel, and from I-20 to get to this dog park on the riverfront is real easy, and we hear how wonderful this dog park is. These people may not have ever thought to stop in Shreveport. Some stay here for the night. They spend their money here. This is a place, this dog park, where everybody knows your name. Let me take that back. Everybody knows your dog's name, and there are newcomers that come every day, and there are old ones that have made best friends there. This particular Sunday was so beautiful, I think there were more dogs there than I've ever seen in my life. There are over 40 dogs, and every dog has a person or two with him. So I know there is a need for another dog park. Two years ago, we started the petition, and I'm so proud of the Southern Hills Business Association and Councilman Flory for finding a grant that they wrote and they got approved. It's their 20-year anniversary, and they thought they would give a present back to the city and proposed putting a dog park in Southern Hills Park. It's a community development grant. It's a special funds program, one-time grant for nonprofits, and it's used to qualify, in search of quality of life programs that will enhance livability. I can't think of anything better. Okay, you probably can think of some other things better than a dog park, but I think a dog park definitely qualifies. I'm so proud of Southern Hills. Even though I live in Broadmore Terrace, it is growing, and the people there care about their community. You've got brand-new businesses, you've got a call center, Ollie's open, Eagles Nest Child Development is expanding. That lets us know people are working, they need to play, that place to take their children. People are moving there, they have children. That's a good sign. All dogs, all fund dogs grooming just moved in. There's an exercise place coming in that's going to sell daiquiris on the side of it. A daiquiri store on the side of an exercise place. How great is that? McAllister's Deli is coming. South Star Urgent Care is open.
Vice Chair.
Okay.
That's basically, I just wanted to end with, why not Southern Hills?
Thank you.
Marvin Mohammed, I rise to speak today on ordinance number 72. And to really fully to understand and digest and dissect ordinance number 72, you have to look at, you have to look at things from a historical perspective first, which I believe that this artist does not do. In 1887, a black Republican by the name of Fletcher C. Legarty, he failed in his reelection campaign as trustee in the city of Shreveport. Trustee was the title that was equivalent to council member today. It wasn't until 1978, 91 years, that another black man or woman, the citizens of the city of Shreveport, had residence, representation of someone that looked just like them. Think about that, 91 years. In that 91, 91-year period, not one single contract went to one black firm, minority women's firm, disadvantaged firm, small business firm. We know that under Mayor Hightower, the fair share department program was initiated by ordinance, and he put a 25% figure on that. Well, from the years between 1978 until 1990, again, those numbers below 1%. And since then, under the, under the working guidance of now, Fair Share Director, have we now really began to make some considerable strides. What we're asking for is that the NAACP Economic Development Chair be included as one of the members of the A&amp;E Committee. When you look at things from a historical context, we need someone that would have, that would be serving as a watchdog advocate for firms that just does not have a force. At the previous fair share meeting on February the 4th, Madam Perkins, you have, you had, you would have submitted to you a company that has 0% fair share participation. That's on your desk right now, from the, from the, from the meeting on this, on this, from this past Friday. It was mentioned at the last meeting that, well, you have the fair share director, you have a mayor that believes in the program, but what happens when we doesn't, when we don't have a mayor and a fair share director that have our best interests at heart? And so with that, we'll ask the council, if we don't receive a friendly amendment from the author of this legislation to add the NAACP Economic Development Chair as a member of the board, we would ask you to vote this down. Any questions?
No.
And I would hope the author would say something versus waiting until the vote to make commentary.
Thank you.
Craig Lee?
Craig Lee, 1112 Prospect Street, I-2, in concert with Marvin T. Mohammed, serving on the executive committee for the NAACP, asks that the council, without an amendment to ordinance 72, propose ordinance 72, vote this down for the same reasons. I led the charge from 1996 to now for economic equity for African-American firms here in the city of Shreveport. I was on a very good call this past week with Ms. Keen, the firm that is conducting the disparity study. The A&amp;E Committee is a very essential part of contract procurement opportunities in the city of Shreveport, and the issue that I have specific to ordinance number 72 is in section 26, 243, in terms of the configuration of the actual committee. So in concert with Marvin T. Mohammed, we are recommending that the chairperson for economic development or our designated representative serve on the A&amp;E Committee because it is paramount that we have representation on all of these economic development matters. In terms of the other aspects of this, this goes part and parcel with Leon Wheeler being in the position, and we are glad that he has been added to the A&amp;E Committee, but again, we're talking about public policy, not just about a particular personality. And so I'm glad that Mayor Perkins is in favor of all of the economic justice and economic equity issues that we are pushing for in the city of Shreveport, but we definitely want the NAACP Economic Development Chairperson or our designated representative to be a part of the A&amp;E Committee.
I did want to go back and say that, and if I heard it right, it was recommended by the A&amp;E Committee to go with the latter firm and not the firm that Mr. Mohammed was speaking about. Okay? I just want to make sure that he got what I was, what I was talking about. If not, I can talk to you outside when it's over.
Mr. Councilman, but I do want to make you see for the ordinance, that all three, that all the votes.
I got it. I got it.
He'll get with you after the meeting.
So not one single recommendation?
No. I got it.
He'll get with you after the meeting. Thank you.
That concludes us.
Thank you. We have the following executive appointments to be considered today, to be withdrawn. We will have Chief Financial Officer Casey Brown, Assistant City Attorney, serving as executive counsel to the mayor, Shenarico Fleming, to be withdrawn at this time. I have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Bowman and second by Councilwoman Taylor. All in favor, let's vote.
Motion carries with six, and one up.
Thank you. To be considered, the metric- To be considered, the Metropolitan Planning Commission, Chris Elberson, is gonna be postponed. Take it a motion postpone.
Motion postpone.
Motion by Councilman Butcher, second by Councilman Bowman. All in favor, let's vote.
Motion carries with six on one aspect.
And next we will have the Historical Preservation Commissioner. I don't wanna mess her name up. Madam Clerk?
Jasmine Jernigan.
Jasmine Jernigan.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilman Bowman. All in favor, let's vote. I hit the wrong idea.
Motion carries with six on one aspect. Congratulations, Ms. Jernigan.
Thank you. Uh, there are no items under the considered agenda to be introduced today. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with regular agenda legislation?
Resolution one thirty-two, authorizing the mayor to execute an option to ground lease between the city of Shreveport and Shreveport H.P. Allendale LLC. Motion to postpone.
Second.
Has been motion to postpone. All in favor, vote. That item has been postponed.
Motion carries with six.
Resolution one sixty-five, approving a restoration tax payment renewal application for the New Solutions LLC, six oh one Mylum Street.
Motion to postpone.
Motion. Motion by Councilman Nicholson, second by?
Councilman Butcher.
Councilman Butcher. All in favor, let's vote. Motion to postpone, yes. All in favor, let's vote, to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I'll say before we move on to the next item, I understand the administration and the economic development team are gonna work with this organization and discuss other possibilities and I'm welcome that when it happens.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution six, amending the pay schedule for the municipal police civil service personnel and municipal file, fire civil service personnel.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Discussion, if I could, real quick.
Well, let me, let's get to motion and then we'll come to the sub.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Butcher. At this time, we'll have discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I just need a little bit of understanding. I've had some calls from mainly just fire personnel about the fire department's raises and, you know, I've not seen it, but a lot of people are saying that it's not equating to thirteen percent. Is there a reason for that? I heard some rumors, but I wanna hear it from y'all.
Councilman Butcher, the thirteen percent is, is on the base pay for both police and fire. It is a thirteen percent pay increase. As you recall, in some of the public safety meetings, we discussed trying to get the starting salary up to forty thousand dollars for the one-year officer. And the thirteen percent did that. So, uh, I think the concern or the confusion is, is that they wanted the thirteen percent on top of the two percent longevity. And we just certainly weren't gonna do that.
Right. I just wanted that to be on the record for everybody that's, that's, that's what I thought was going on, but I don't, I wanted y'all to be the one to say it as opposed to me. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
That motion carries with six.
Resolution seven, accepting the, the public dedication of the west side of Chestnut Park Lane and Providence Place intersection right of way in Providence subdivision.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Butcher, second by Councilman Nicholson. Any discussion? All in favor, let's vote.
And that motion carries with five.
Resolution eight, accepting the public dedication at Pecan Square Avenue, Fairwoods Drive and Woodbury Avenue right of way and thirty-foot wide drainage servitude in Providence subdivision, Phase Four, Unit A.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Butcher, second by Councilman Nicholson. Any discussion? Not, let's vote.
Motion carries with five.
Resolution nine, authorizing a request to be made to the Louisiana Department of Natural Resources, Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board, to seek public bids for an oil, gas and mineral lease involving the property located in districts F and G and described herein and to execute the lease for certain mineral interests owned by the city of Shreveport and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to the intent of this resolution.
So move by the chair.
So move, second.
Moved by the chair, second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? All in favor, let's vote.
And that motion carries with six.
Resolution ten, authorizing the Shreveport Airport Authority to discard of surplus property passenger boarding bridges IFB number twenty-two dash zero six six.
So move.
Second. Moved by Councilman Butcher, second by the chair. All, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, would the administration briefly describe how we reached a conclusion that this passenger boarding bridge has no value before we discard it?
We, we put it out for bid to try to get? You wanna?
Yeah, it, basically, it was put out for bid twice to determine the value of the boarding bridges after soliciting it twice and not receiving any bids for the value. That gives us the opportunity to now to say that it is no value and for us to discard of the boarding bridges.
Was it put out for bid without reserve? With no minimum price?
No, no, it wasn't a minimum price.
What will happen to the discarded bridge? Will it be thrown away?
They'll be picked up as scrap. We, we also work with state surplus property, trying to get them to do it with this, there's no value in it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Not, let's vote.
And that motion carries with six.
Resolution eleven, to amend resolution number one thirty-nine of twenty twenty-one, which was adopted to execute an agreement between the city of Shreveport and Carr Rigs and Ingram LLC for the purpose of an external audit of the city for fiscal year January one, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
So move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilman Butcher. All in favor? Is there any discussion? Not, let's vote.
Motion carries with six.
Resolution twelve, a resolution whereby the mayor is making a recommendation to the city council for its approval regarding the amount and type of various insurance premiums and to authorize the mayor to execute a payment to the agent of record for the purpose of binding insurance and otherwise providing respect thereto.
So move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Bowman, second by the chair. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, with these particular various insurance premiums, does this, this is just for the city? Or does this affect our small businesses as well?
This is just the city.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Not, let's vote.
Motion carries with six.
Resolution thirteen, suspending the effects of certain provisions of Chapter Ten and any applicable provisions of the Shreveport Unified Development Code of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, relative to the festivities surrounding the opening of the lights on the Texas Street Bridge.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. Any discussion? Not, let's vote. Councilwoman Fuller, welcome to the mic.
Thanks. You wanna vote, Councilwoman?
I already. I literally just sat down.
Thirteen.
We'll go to the next one.
I got you. Thank you.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution fourteen, endorsing the development of a dog park at Southern Hills Park.
Moved by Alan Jackson, second by Vice Chair.
Moved by Alan Jackson, second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Not, let's vote.
And that motion carries with seven.
Resolution fifteen, to congratulate and celebrate Alpha Calpa, Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Delta Lambda Omega Chapter for their seventy-five years of dedicated service.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Thank you. This time, we do not have any resolutions to be introduced. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two?
Ordinance thirteen, amending the twenty twenty-two Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance twelve, amending the twenty twenty-two Airport Capital Improvements Fund Budget. Ordinance fifteen, amending the twenty twenty-two Airport Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance sixteen, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, twenty twenty-two Capital Projects Fund Budget, appropriating the funds authorized herein. Ordinance seventeen, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, twenty twenty-two Street Special Revenue Fund Budget, appropriating the funds authorized herein. Ordinance eighteen, closing and abandoning a sidewalk dedication in the chorus noted subdivision in section twenty-one. Township seventeen north, range fourteen west. Ordinance nineteen, a series ordinance pursuant to the general bond ordinance as defined herein, authorizing the issuance of taxable water and sewer revenue refunding bonds, series twenty twenty-two, and a total principal amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety million dollars of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the general bond ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds, pledging the net revenues to secure such bonds, prescribing the form, certain terms and conditions of said bonds, authorizing the use of a preliminary official statement and the preparation and distribution of an official statement, authorizing the purchase of and subscription for certain escrow securities, authorizing escrow verification and engagement of escrow agents and authorizing execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Thank you. Is there a motion to introduce these ordinance?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Bowman, second by Councilman Nicholson. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with ordinance on second reading and final pass?
Ordinance seventy-two, to amend certain portions of Chapter Twenty-six of the city of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the architectural and engineering selection process.
Motion to table.
Second.
Has been motion to table by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Nicholson. Any, no discussion?
Um, do you have some discussion?
Yes.
Um, I spoke with CIO Whitehorn. I think that there's a few amendments that might need to be made per the administration. But we have worked on this in committee. This is not just something coming from me. This was a subcommittee of the A and E commit, of the A and E committee, made up of staff and one member of that committee to try to create more opportunity for local and minority professional services, not contractors that would be subject to bid law. But we do need to reconvene, work with the administration and see what we wanna do. And I look forward to it. Thank you.
No further discussion, let's vote.
You did say table and not postpone, right?
Table.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance one ninety-five, to amend Chapter Fifty-eight, Article Four, Division One and Chapter Seventy-eight, Article Eight, Division One of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to litter and dumping.
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Nicholson, to the table. Any discussion? If not, let's vote.
Discussion.
Discussion, Councilman, vote.
Can, and I think that Mr. Green is left, but I did wanna ask, have we talked to anyone about where we are with the cameras right now at this particular time?
Some information from SWF Co. on our polling with these particular cameras and putting them up, but I have the same question as to when the installation process is going to begin.
Okay. Thank you.
Was, was that the installa, excuse me, Mr. Chairman? Was that the installation of the surveillance cameras at the dump sites?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We're still in discussion trying to get that done. We did talk about it again at our staff meeting on Monday morning. And so we're, we're in the process of trying to get that accomplished.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
No other discussion, let's vote.
That was a mistake. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance one, amending the twenty twenty-two budget for the general fund.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Butcher, second by Councilman Nicholson. Any discussion? If not, let's vote.
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I'll say this legislation will appropriate thirty thousand dollars to the Gingerbread House. There was a fifteen thousand dollar appropriation last year, which was not paid for administrative reasons. And I just wanna say for everybody here and for those watching elsewhere, how important the Gingerbread House is to this community. It is an organization that helps us prosecute sex offenses against children. As many of you know, Councilman Butcher's wife, Heather Butcher, is, is in that line of work and was recently recognized with an incredibly moving segment about her, her efforts as a law enforcement officer for vulnerable child victims. So I appreciate your support on this and I just hope that this council and future councils will continue to do everything they can to support the Gingerbread House. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Councilman. And she's actually there right now.
Let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance two, amending the twenty twenty-two general fund budget.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Butcher. Any discussion? Not, let's vote.
That motion carries with seven.
Ordinance five, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, twenty twenty-two Street Special Revenue Fund Budget, appropriating the funds authorized herein.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance six, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, twenty twenty-two Capital Projects Fund Budget, appropriating the funds authorized herein.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance eight, declaring the city's interest in declaring certain land a surplus and our intention to donate certain land to Volunteers of America of North Louisiana.
Motion to postpone.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped number seven.
You skipped to ordinance seven, didn't you?
Ordinance seven, amending the twenty twenty-two Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget.
Okay. Motion by Councilwoman Taylor.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? If not, let's vote.
That motion carries with six.
Ordinance eight, declaring the city's interest in declaring certain land a surplus and our intention to donate certain land to Volunteers of America of North Louisiana. And this will need to be postponed for publishing requirements.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Bowman, to be postponed. Any discussion? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven, postpone.
Ordinance nine, to amend and repeal sections in Chapter Seventy, planning and development of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to Shreveport Metropolitan Planning Commission of Caddo Parish.
Can I get a motion? We need a motion, yeah, we need a motion and a second in order to have discussion. Moved by Councilwoman Taylor.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowman. Discussion? Motion by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Bowman for, now we at the discussion?
We have discussion. I'm sorry.
Orderance number nine, right? Yes. We had this discussion on yesterday.
Yeah, but I wanted to be explaining for those in audience. I'd like for it to be explained for the members of the audience and the bureaus.
Who are you asking to explain?
The, I'd rather, Clerk.
Mr. Clerk, would you come forth and explain ordinance number nine?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. As you're aware, we have asked the council to either table or delay actions on this ordinance. This ordinance is establishing procedures to do things that we don't truly feel. And if you remember at your last meeting, we brought legal counsel with us to share that idea with you that we don't truly feel was actually constitutional and that, and we have found that the Parish of Caddo, the Caddo Parish Commission, and the state representative that actually led the charge with this ordinance has asked for Attorney General opinions to determine if this ordinance really did what we think it did. And not we, but you know, the state of Louisiana. There's so much confusion, there's so much wrapped up in this ordinance that we don't feel, and we ask that you, because we never asked you to remove us from the regional planning and the regional zoning for Caddo Parish, which is inclusive of Boja Parish and the City of Boja, that we have a very close relationship with, a close, very tight-knit planning process with. So we just ask you at this time, it's not going to disrupt the City of Shreveport, it's not going to hurt the City of Shreveport, but until all of the answers have been answered about this actual bill, that you table this ordinance, please.
But how would you proceed? I'm sorry. How would you all proceed until then? Like, the next meeting is coming up, am I correct?
This has nothing to do basically with the City of Shreveport. Basically, this was the attempt of the citizens out of the Parish of Caddo to remove jurisdictional responsibilities from the City of Shreveport. It does not hurt the City of Shreveport. The City of Shreveport was not a part of any of the the purposes of this act. It's just the City of Shreveport has the ability to do nothing, and it does not affect the city.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll say first that I have, as we all do, tremendous respect for Mr. Clark. I think the MPC has served the city very well under his leadership. I've looked at this legislation, I've talked to their lawyer, I've listened to all lawyers, and I just, it's not clear to me yet that we need to do this. I'm not saying that we won't come to that conclusion eventually. So my preference would be that we, at a minimum, postpone it and do a little more work over the next two weeks. I just don't want to do something that, that in any way impedes the MPC's ability to continue to provide the excellent service that it provides our entire community. So, so that's my, that's my request and my motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I wasn't here yesterday, so this could have been discussed. As far as the members that are representatives of the parish, they still have a vote to what goes on. So basically, the way that you and I have discussed it, and the way I understand you to say it now, is that we're going to do business the way we've been doing it, but it's only going to impact what goes on in the City of Shreveport.
That's correct.
But those, but we're not changing anything at all, but those board members from, from outside that were appointed by the Parish Commission still have a vote. Is that correct?
One of the board members that did not live inside the city limits of Shreveport has resigned from the board. Otherwise, the other members are still participating.
But they are, they are from within the city limits of Shreveport?
They are within the city limits of Shreveport.
That was my biggest concern, is that we might have people that are making decisions that basically impact the City of Shreveport, but they really don't have any skin in the game because they live outside the city. But if you're telling me that just because they were appointed by the commission, but they do live in the city limits, I, I don't have a problem with that. But I would have a problem if we had people that were living outside the city limits.
And that's part of the reason we're just trying to get all of that resolved, that, you know, if members appointed by the Caddo Parish Commission that lived inside the City of Shreveport still can serve on the MPC board, but we're just waiting on the Attorney General to make some type of determination.
It's no different to me than having people on the civil service board that are recommended by the, by higher education. That's where some of the recommendations come from, civil service boards. So I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but I do if, if we had people voting on things in my district that really weren't affected. But it doesn't sound like that's the case. So, but I, I agree with, with Councilman Nicholson, and I think what Councilman Bowman was saying as well. Maybe we need to just at least postpone it. I don't know about tabling it, but I would be for postponing it. I don't want to kick the can down the road, and we'll be here ten months from now and still don't have an answer.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to hear from the administration.
I mean, we agree with what Mr. Clark is saying, and honestly, Councilman, that's the only guidance we're looking for from the council is, you know, what do we do about the appointments? Not just as, as far as appointments outside of, those living outside of the city limits. But another concern is appointments that were made by the parish as well, even if they live within the city limits, and whether or not we have to reappoint with city council confirmation. So as long as we get guidance from you all on that, we can move forward however. And so, and it's no immediate, I don't think there's any immediate impact as well.
That was my question, is should we, should we appoint the, should we confirm these, is it two members that were recommended by the parish?
There were four members recommended by the parish.
Now there's three.
Nice three. And one of the members in the parish term expired. And that's the reason that you had a member on your agenda, because the mayor graciously agreed to reappoint that member to the MPC.
That's a question above my pay grade.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I was talking.
I just was saying, should we, should we put these people on the agenda to be appointed by the city until we can figure out what's going on? Like what you're saying for housekeeping, but that's.
And that guidance is, I'm just, I'm going to depend on my city attorney to tell us yea and nay to these things. So that's, that's guidance I'm waiting on from, from him, and again, actions by council.
Mr. Chairman, can we hear from Danielle Brown, please? Attorney Danielle Brown.
Good evening. As it relates to the information regarding the opinion from the Attorney General, today was my first hearing of that, but as Mr. Clark stated, it does not impact the City of Shreveport. That legislation does not impact the City of Shreveport. The legislation that you have before you, the purpose of that was to be in line with the law that is currently on the books. That particular House bill was passed at the beginning of 2021, and it has, it's been sitting there for a year before it became effective. And if there were some concerns by MPC or the parish, they had an entire year in which to get that opinion. I will also bring to the council's attention, without going into detail, that we are currently in litigation as it relates to this. So any steps that we take that do not move us into compliance with the current law could be problematic in the future. I understand that every, there are different entities that are involved in this. However, none of the entities thus far, excluding me, that have come before the city council have, have a duty to represent the city. We've heard from the MPC, which is a separate entity from the City of Shreveport, and they've spoken about issues that the parish has, has as well. But once again, those are separate entities who have their separate agendas. So I would just bring that to your attention, and if there are any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wood.
Yes, sir.
Can you speak on what is the current law that's in effect right now?
The current law that was passed allows for the establishment of a MPC that is, that excludes the parish Caddo. That was passed by, I believe it was House Bill two sixty-eight, but I may be, but it's attachment to the legislation before you. That is the bill, that is the law that's currently in effect, which does not include the parish Caddo. And so the legislation that you all are about to vote on just comes in compliance with that. We were referencing a, previously and currently, we reference a act from, I believe, nineteen fifty-six that the new legislation modified and maybe even repealed in some ways. However, this only is to be in compliance with the law that is currently on the books. If for some reason the Attorney General gives an opinion on that, we are still in compliance with the law that's on the books. If we do nothing, we will not be in compliance with the law that is on the books as of right now.
So for clarification, voting for this brings us in compliance with the current law?
Yes.
And under that current law, do those members have to be reappointed?
That is not what this legislation is about. This legislation is only to reference a current statute. I do have an additional opinion on that, but that is not the law that is before. And if the council wants me to go into that, I will. I was just only speaking to the law that the legislation is currently before you. And I'm selective in my words because we are in litigation as it relates to some of these issues.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? So this particular time, your motion was to, Councilwoman Taylor, was to, was it to postpone or was it to confirm?
Basically, what she said is only bringing us into compliance with the law.
And then Councilman Nicholson, you had a substitute motion.
Yes, and if that's seconded, Mr. Chairman, I believe that's a privileged motion that has to be disposed of before the main motion. And if it fails, then we'll proceed with vote on the main motion.
And your, your substitute motion was to postpone?
Yes.
I second that.
And Councilman Bush, seconded then. At this particular time, there's a substitute motion on the floor to postpone. It was a motion by Councilman Nicholson and seconded by Councilman Butcher to postpone. All in favor at this particular time?
I think I have a question.
And any other question?
I do.
Yes.
I guess I don't recollect there being any flaw in this particular piece of legislation. Can we even have that conversation right now, or is that something that's only remains from executive session? But there's no flaw in this legislation, is there?
Councilman, Attorney.
A good year.
She says, is there any flaw in this?
Is there any defects in the way that this has been drafted?
No.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
So we voted on the substitute motion.
Yeah. The substitute's motion, substitute motion is to postpone.
Motion failed.
Motion failed.
Fine.
So at this particular time, the bail-in motion is to pass this legislation as it is?
Second.
It was moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Bowman. If there's no discussion, all in favor, let's vote.
Motion carries with five.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you proceed?
Ordinance ten to amend various articles and sections in the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code related to fence requirements and restrictions.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Chair, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? All in favor, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance two oh four zoning case number twenty-one dash one fifty-eight dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southeast corner of Lagardi Street and Hocken Street, Shreveport Caddo Parish, from R one five Single Family Residential District to R A Rural Agricultural District.
Move to postpone.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Bowman to postpone. Any discussion? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance two twenty-seven zoning case number twenty-one dash one eighty-five dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the northeast corner of David Range Road and Willis Street, Shreveport Caddo Parish, L.A., from R one five Single Family Residential District to C one Neighborhood Commercial District.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance eleven zoning case number twenty-one dash one eighty-four dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located interwest of Linwood Avenue and approximately eighty-three feet south of West Eighty-third Street, Shreveport Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R one seven Single Family Residential District to C two Corridor Commercial District.
What's going on with that?
Family home. Give me a motion. Motion by the Chair.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowman. Is there any discussion? You want, Mr. Clark? Mr. Clark, Mr. Clark, would you come, please? Councilman Bowman has.
Just what's being proposed at this, I'm curious.
Is this the one Hollywood?
Linwood.
Well, Linwood.
Linwood.
Eleven.
This, this is a situation where someone is taking a abandoned house, converting it into an after-school or a bakery-type facility. Just a very low-impact, commercial-type of use on, on that section. It's basically abandoned and, and desolate, and she's going in and, and taking one of the vacant houses and doing the after-school program and so forth. This might be counterall right.
So this is in the neighborhood down Eighty-third, or is this on the corner of Linwood and Eighty-third?
Is this the one I was? Which one are we talking about?
Eleven, south on, south on West Eighty-third.
Eighty-third and?
There's a single, single-family residential.
At Linwood and Eighty-third.
C two.
Yes.
It's south of that, in that near where that chicken place is and the Thrifty Liquors right there too.
So I'm saying is it, is it down the street?
Like in the neighborhood and. That's west.
Let me pull this.
I can't picture your house there.
That's what I'm getting at. So how far is it down, like?
Eighty-three feet would be a lot from the corner.
Would be in front of the Sabre Lot, if I'm not.
Okay, I had the wrong case. This, this is down where there are a number of restaurants in, in the area. There's a Sabre Lot, there's a Piggly Wiggly, I think, if I'm not mistaken. They're, they're just a composite of commercial uses. And this was just an opportunity to convert something that was Zone R one seven to be utilized to C two, and if you look, I don't have the map here, but it's, it's next to C two property and, and a vacant lot. map here, but it's, it's next to C two property, and, and a vacant lot, so, and C two properties on each side of it.
Chicken restaurants is the one on the corner there.
It was quite compatible.
In the blue.
I'm getting my, my C is confused, heavy commercial. C four was, C four?
C four is the heaviest.
C four is the heaviest, C one is the lightest, C two is in the middle.
Because Linwood is such a heavy traffic area.
Have some pictures. It's a vacant lot.
No, it won't, you can't convert that later for, for that, without, without a special permit.
Do you think it's something negative about her rezoning this property to commercial, light commercial?
Well, look, I think the, the issue is, can they come back and do a special use for packaged liquor or something?
Anything like that.
If you understand we are going through the moratorium to study just that.
But then they could, that's all he was looking at, but it, but it would be, it would still be a special use, it would have to come to a.
It still have to come, okay.
It wouldn't be a use for all right.
That's all I was checking. Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other discussion? Not, let's vote.
And motion carries with seven.
Ordinance twelve, zoning case number twenty-one dash one ninety-nine dash C, in order to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the south side of Burt Coons Industrial Loop, approximately five hundred and twenty feet east of Linwood Avenue, Shreveport Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from C three, general commercial district to C four, heavy commercial district.
Do you have a motion?
This the same, Mr. Clark?
Do I have a motion?
This is right.
So move.
Move by Councilwoman Taylor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bootcher. Now we're open for discussion. Mr. Clark?
That the same? I'm just making sure.
No, this is right there by the raceway.
Right, but I'm saying, are they trying to do, what, what are they putting here?
Auto shop.
This is a situation, that the C four is the heaviest commercial district, and this gentleman wanted to do a auto body repair shop, and the C three would not allow that to happen, so he needed the C four zoning.
Does it sit back forward enough? I guess. Okay. It just didn't look like it's sent back forward enough. Okay.
There's a car wash right across the street, too, so.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
I got it, Mr. Clark, I see it, I see it.
You see, all of this is C three, so there are no, that's immediately close, and in order to do auto repair, auto body repair, you would have to get a C four zoning. We have very limited C four, because that was a new zoning class brought home by the adoption of the Unified Development Code for heavy commercial uses.
Got a subdivision right there, R one seven there.
I, I mean, I, I'll just, it's not my district, and I'll refer, as we usually did, but this, this will put C four very close to residential subdivision, so maybe we should postpone and just look at this a little bit further before we push the button.
I can remove my motion.
Ma'am?
Remove my motion.
She's going to withdraw her motion.
Okay, motion postponed.
Yeah, and she's going to.
Motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone.
Second.
Would you like?
Second by, motion by Councilwoman Taylor to postpone, seconded by Councilman Jackson.
I just want to, yeah, I just want to look at it, too, it just looks like it sits too far, it's too close to the neighborhood, and it's, it looks like it's not sitting far back enough, if I'm not mistaken, so.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
That, those houses you're seeing back there on Linwood to the south, that's a rock crushing, and stuff is outside the city. It's a, it's not just, it's not just residential houses there, they've got like a construction business that he takes a bunch of rocks and stuff and dumps them, isn't that right, Mr.
That I want?
Is, is this the same poor fellow who has a rock crusher across the street from his house?
I, I don't, this is.
We can't do this to that man.
That area is outside the city, right behind it, it's outside the city.
Well, I guess the state legislature wanted no zoning outside the city.
Man, that's too bad. If only they had a five-mile buffer that was contingent, conforming to the uses inside the city.
Well.
Any other discussion? Not, let's vote.
Oh, wait, postpone?
Yes.
Y'all ride by there and look, it's, it's, there's no residential backing up to that.
Motion passes with seven.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any legislation to be removed from the table?
None, and I'm aware of chair.
Do we have any appeals?
There are no appeals to consider today.
We've had property standards. Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk report?
There's not.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any additional communication?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
Can a council member have any additional communication?
Chair.
Yes.
Apologize for my tardiness, I was speaking to a group at Centenary College, and it went over.
Yes, ma'am, I got the message, and I did return your call.
Oh, I missed it, sorry, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I ask the council to keep Councilman Florrie in your prayers, please. Also, there is a civil rights march that will be this Sunday at two o'clock, starting, I believe, at C.C. Antoine Park, and they will march up to Booker T. Washington before the Super Bowl.
Before Super Bowl, thank you. We also would like that you would keep our deputy clerk family and all of them in your prayers. Grandmother went home to be with the Lord, so we ask that you continue to keep her in your prayers. And so then, if nothing else to come before this body, we adjourn.